Good evening. And I call to order the July 11th, 2017, regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And I ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation given tonight by Father Derek Harbin of St. John's Episcopal Church. Then after that, I'll ask everybody to stand and join us as Councilman Bill Mooney leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you have given us this nation, this commonwealth, and this city for our heritage. I thank you for our mayor and city council, and for the spirit of optimism that pervades our city as they lift up a positive vision for our community's future. I thank you for the members of the Portsmouth Museum and Fine Arts Commission, and for their hard work in preparation in proposing an amazing cultural arts district for the future of our city. I thank you for the members of Support Portsmouth Public Art, whose inspirational Circle of Sail sculpture will provide a world-class first impression for those entering the gateway of our beloved city for years to come. I thank you for those citizens of all races and backgrounds, known to us and unknown, who work daily to make Portsmouth a better place to live. O Lord, our governor, send your blessing upon this council as they gather to deliberate this evening. Pour upon them the spirit of wisdom, compassion, and justice, that in their decisions they may promote the well-being and prosperity of all citizens. These things I ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
To my colleagues on council, we'll take electronic roll call. Please signify your presence by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
The next item is approval of minutes. We have minutes of a call meeting, June 26, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting, June 27, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting, June 27, 2017. What is your pleasure of adoption?
Second.
We have a motion to approve adopted minutes, and it's been seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to special presentation. It is our great honor to express our gratitude in a small way, with a small lapel pen, for those people who serve on our boards and commissions. And we'll do that tonight to a group of folks who have been newly appointed to one of the various boards and commissions. And I'll call upon our Vice Mayor Paige Cherry to make this presentation. And Madam Clerk, if you will give the instructions to the recipients.
Yes, sir. If the following would please join Vice Mayor Cherry at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ms. Ashley Starling; with the Planning Commission, Ms. Sherry Thaxton; and also with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Scott Horn.
All right, my wife says she's gonna say I have a big mouth, so I'll do this without it. It wasn't that funny. No. There we go. First, let me congratulate you all for being appointed, and also thank you on behalf of my colleagues, and actually, on the whole 97,000 citizens of Portsmouth, for being willing to give your time, your efforts, and your talents to serve us. The recommendations you're gonna make to the city council can help us make some very important decisions for the future of our citizens. And to the citizens out there who are watching, and the audience sitting on television night, we have other vacancies, and we solicit your support in helping us move the city to the next level. So please go online and apply, stop by the clerk's office, or contact any member of council. So, you know, like, since it's only three of you, I'll give you all the opportunity to say a couple words. You like?
I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to the opportunity.
I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to serving you all.
So, again, thank you all for, again, giving up your time and talents to help this city move along to the next century. Because of you, we are gonna take Portsmouth to the next level. So congratulations. Good morning.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for citizens who desire to address council this evening?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comment.
Thank you, ma'am. And this brings us to item 17289 on our agenda, which is a public hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on the proposed placement of a sculpture to be known as the Circle of Sail in the Crawford Street Roundabout.
This is a matter that council received a briefing on, both in work session and regular session, last month, and scheduled this public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. And we do have a rendering of the proposed sculpture on the board. So the public hearing is now open, and if you'll come, one at a time, state your name and your address, and please limit yourself to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, city council members, Dr. Patton, and the citizens of Portsmouth. I'm Barbara Vincent. I live at 1715 Bradford Terrace, in the West Parkview section. And I'm speaking on behalf of Support Portsmouth Public Art, a nonprofit organization of volunteers committed to commissioning, purchasing, and installing public art in Portsmouth. In the last seven years, we've placed the Toad Sculpture, seven painted murals, the Love Sculpture, and most recently, the First Amendment Tribute. Most of these have all been placed on public land. Most have been created by Portsmouth artists, and all were funded by grants and private donations. In the past, we've solicited citizens for ideas for new projects, and this one is no different. It comes to us from Portsmouth resident Rebecca Laris, a graduate of Auburn University in the School of Architecture, degree in interior design. Rebecca?
Thank you, Barbara. As Barbara said, I'm Rebecca Laris. I live at 421 Middle Street in Portsmouth. Mayor Rowe, Dr. Patton, council members, everyone here, thank you so much for being here. I'm particularly grateful to support Portsmouth Public Arts and the city, to be able to share my sculpture with you this evening. I'll have a model that we will be discussing, and also, there's an image on the screen as well. A little bit about the inspiration for the model and the sculpture. Like many of you, I drove around the circle at Portsmouth Pavilion, Harbor Vista Apartments, and City Hall for years. And as I thought, this really needs to have something important. This is a gateway to our city. So I challenged myself to come up with a design, and I thought long and hard about what should it be. And I considered the heritage of Portsmouth. We have a maritime heritage like few other cities. And a sail, stylized sails, came to mind. So I did an initial sketch of sails with a mast, and then I thought strongly about something unique to our city, and that's our city logo. And I'm not sure if everyone recognizes it, but it's on our buildings, our signs, it's even on the bills that we get in the mail. So thinking three dimensionally, I took four of our sail logos and interconnected them, and created a 3D logo of our city, and out of that grew the Circle of Sail. Underlying the element of the Circle of Sails design is also how it unifies the structures around it. It takes into consideration the Portsmouth Pavilion and how it's anchored. Harbor Vista Apartments is literally their name, and now our City Hall can have its own city logo right beside it. In addition to that, last but not least, the historical element is important, our city's heritage. But to me, this also signifies something new and fresh for Portsmouth. It's our city under full sail, headed in new directions. A little bit about the construction. It is powder-coated white aluminum. It's fabricated locally. It's roughly 22 feet tall and 20 feet wide. The sails are segmented, just like regular sails are. That's for ease of construction and ease of repairing in the field. The sails are angled with turnbuckles and concrete footers, just like they are at Portsmouth Pavilion, except on a much smaller scale. There is a center mast that's also anchored in a concrete pad, and that center mast also has space around it for traffic visibility approaching the circle. At night, it really shines, and I mean that literally. We're going to be using LED reflectors, and it's going to produce rich, white light. I'm very excited about this project. I'm not intending to personally benefit from it financially, so I'm waiving any design fee or project management fee at this time. I just want it to benefit the community, and I hope that Portsmouth will be proud of it. That's about it. I hope you like it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Let's keep our...
SBPA is very proud and privileged to partner with the Breeden Company of Virginia Beach on this project. As you know, they agreed to give $100,000 to us. We welcome their dedication and commitment to Portsmouth. Our thanks also go out to our supporters who have always supported us in fundraisers, and they are here tonight. We thank you for your attention in this matter, and we hope you'll look favorably on our project. Thank you.
We do have people who have signed up to speak, and I'll invite them to the lectern first. Ian Vaughn. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Ian Vaughn, and I currently reside at 403 Court Street here in Portsmouth, Virginia. I am here tonight in support of the proposed sculpture in the traffic circle outside of City Hall. The sculpture, which was designed by Rebecca Laris, shows a lot of initiative and vision for our city. I admire her efforts, and I've always admired her work. In my role as committee member, and now chairman of Portsmouth Downtown Design Committee, I am very familiar with other successful projects that Rebecca has been a part of. And because I have an understanding of the architecture and artwork throughout this city, I am confident that the proposed sculpture would be a great addition and asset to our city. My background is in design. I have a degree in architecture from Virginia Tech. I have worked in a variety of, I've worked on a variety of project types in various offices, both in the public and private sectors. And from my experience, regardless of the project type or scale of the project, it is important to have a strong concept for a successful project. And what Rebecca has put together is a very strong project, and very strong concept. The concept successfully uses the shape of the sail that we were all familiar with. The sails, which are symbols found in our city logo and seal, have been used as the main elements of this sculpture, and it creates a true work of art. Her concept for a sculpture is not only visually attractive, but it's unique, it's authentic, it provides a sense of history, and it represents what the city stands for, recognizing our strong maritime history and moving forward in the future. With the proposed location at the entrance of our city, the sculpture becomes a great landmark scene from many vantage points, whether you are in the car, on your bike, on foot, or even in your boat as you approach the marina. Residents and visitors will be able to catch a glimpse of this incredible sculpture. I'm just excited that Rebecca had the vision to present this idea to us. I look forward to the day that I and others will be able to take pictures of this wonderful artwork in our city. So I ask that the mayor and members of city council please consider the proposed project. I think it will be a great contribution to our city that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next speaker is Pam Copel, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
I'm Pam Copel, and I live at 501 Elizabeth Place in Swimming Point. And Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of council, I'm here speaking in favor of the Circle of Sail sculpture for the roundabout. Approximately 10 years ago, the city council sponsored a committee to come up with a sculpture for the roundabout. And guess what we decided? We decided on a sail. Barbara Vincent was on the committee, Bill Hargrove was on the committee, James Overton, and we presented this to city council. And guess what? You all loved it, but you didn't have any money to do it. So, here we are, 10 years later, and we have a marvelous volunteer group, Support Portsmouth Public Art, which has brought the newest project to the city, a Circle of Sail. The wonderful sculpture has been designed by Rebecca Laris, who is donating her time and talent with the design and project management. The sculpture will be underwritten by the Breeden Company, which is showing its confidence in our city by contributing $100,000 for the sculpture's fabrication and installation. The Circle of Sail is an outstanding way to welcome visitors as well as residents. It would combine our maritime history with a fresh, new look for Portsmouth. Full sail, headed into the future. Please vote to support the installation. By doing so, Portsmouth will not only have a beautiful sculpture, but you will recognize the hard work of the volunteer group, Support Portsmouth Public Art, and an exceptional gift given to our city by the Breeden Company. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the next speaker is Mark Gudolgi-Yotrowski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and other interested parties. We are making a decision to commit some of our public space to a monument that may last for decades. We have already devoted a significant gateway to the city, Town Square, to a particular monument that was built with a particular message in mind. It's the original resistance. And so we need to think carefully when we are going to use space for long periods of time about the message that we are imparting. Now, every work of public art, the message is something that's subject to interpretation. And I would like to have this particular project deferred for a period of time to ensure that all segments of the community are on board with the message that we are conveying. When the other monument was put up, it didn't matter. The people in charge had a message that they were conveying. And everybody either fell in line or kept their mouths shut about it. Some people call it a monument to the fallen, the soldiers who fought in the war. But what gives, what detracts from the credence of that statement is, there are no Union soldiers. And we know that across this country, there were families divided, some members of the family fighting on one side, and other members on the other. Portsmouth was no different. Now, a sail doesn't look that controversial on the face of it, but the people who have sailing ships tend to be the people who are better off. The people who have traditionally run things in this country, and who still have a great say in the running of everything. I just want to ensure that the community as a whole is happy with this particular use. And if there is a consensus in Portsmouth that this really reflects what we want to say about ourselves, what we want people to interpret us as being, which is to say a community that cares about all of its people, then full speed ahead. But it never hurts to take a few extra moments for reflection and for conversation before we decide that we are going to commit public space to a particular purpose for decades. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 17-289 addresses the proposed placement of a sculpture to be known as the Circle of Sail in the Crawford Street Roundabout. I oppose this proposed resolution. The Circle of Sail does not represent the vision principles or even acknowledge the history of our city. The sail is coming from the Portsmouth logo. The edited vision principles of Portsmouth was voted on on February the 14th. One principle states, "A city that, which celebrates its history while embracing its future." What is our future here in Portsmouth? Is our future connected to our history? Where did this connection be? Another vision principle states, "A prosperous port city which builds on its assets, its strategic geographic location, its waterways, its rich diversity, its sense of place to create economic opportunity for all of its citizens." We're going to build on the prosperous port assets. Our waterways are providing for the shipbuilding industry. How are we, the people, going to do that? Another principle states, "A lifelong learning city which fosters education in its broadest sense." What does that mean? Allowing the developer to pay for a sculpture that has no meaning for our city? Is that what it means? Another principle states, "It's a guiding one for compact for leadership." No surprises, share information. Compact means an agreement between individuals. Does this compact mean individuals elected to city council mean that the council will do whatever they want to do without any citizen engagement or influence? This resolution is certainly an example. The presentation of this sculpture at the prior work session was a surprise. This sculpture was a done deal when it came before the council. For the citizen to speak to this was an afterthought, not a forethought. Here's what happened. The idea for the sculpture came to Rebecca one day as she was driving. It's a sailboat, the city symbol in three dimensions. Its four sailboats intertwined, she told Wavy.com. It's a nod to the city's rich maritime heritage. On the center of the mast, we'll create a large opening so that at any given point on the circle, you can see the opposing traffic. Breeden owns Harbor Vista Apartments, which sits across from the circle. Their residents would get a unique view. Where is the city's vision and overall focus for a master plan strategy in this sculpture? All other cities recognize people who have made the city great. For example, Virginia Beach Navy SEAL Memorial, and Bethlehem Steel Workers Memorial. We have boards and commissions to be citizens advisory commissions to assist the erected, elected to make decisions on an overall development strategy instead of projects. Now we have a compact between the elected, so they will decide whatever they want to do without the citizens' engagement or influence. This public art nonprofit is a favorite clique. They didn't have to go before the history commission to outline its plan. They don't have to go through a process. The history commission is the official consultant advisor to the city council pertaining to Portsmouth history. It's a job to assist and cooperate with public and private groups in developing, establishing, maintaining, preserving, and publicizing place of historical significance. How is this sculpture addressing the rich maritime heritage of Portsmouth? The shipyard has a 250-year anniversary this year. I haven't seen the city doing any celebration for the shipyard history. We, the people in Portsmouth, have one of the largest shipyards in the world, specializing in repairing, overhauling, and modernizing ships and submarines. It has provided support for all the wars of our country to maintain our republican form of government. One of the major pieces of equipment to support the war effort has to be dismantled. There has been numerous presentations obtained support on what to do with this equipment, the hammerhead crane. This nonprofit could have done something to help find a solution to this request from the Navy. Instead, they only thought about themselves and not the history of our city, and they weren't directed to go to the history commission first. They came directly to the city council. We have a memorial sculpture of shipyard workers with the crane at Paradise Creek. That sculpture demonstrates a part of our history. It could be moved to the roundabout. It can honor those shipyard workers and put the names of those who were killed while working on a plaque. Portsmouth has forgotten all the men and women who have served our country, whether in the armed forces or in our shipyard. These people need to be remembered and honored for working and dying for us to maintain our freedom. Move the shipyard worker sculpture to the roundabout, and put the Circle of Sail in the square of Paradise Creek. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, the next speaker is Kathy Revelle, please. And ma'am, you have five minutes. And ladies and gentlemen, would you give respect to each speaker and not show a public outburst? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, honorable members of city council, Dr. Patton, and fellow citizens. My name is Kathy Revelle, and I live at 422 Crawford Street. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Circle of Sail for the traffic circle in front of the pavilion. I'm a commissioner on the Economic Development Authority, and it occurs to me that this sculpture and all public art is good for our economy. The creation of a work of public art adds beauty and interest to our city. It creates a space that is not only beautiful addition for our citizens to enjoy, but a draw for visitors coming to our city, and that makes it an economic driver. Visitors and tourists coming to our city are looking for places of interest. While they are here, they are staying in our hotels and inns, they are eating in our restaurants, and they are shopping in our stores. All of this activity generates tax revenue, which has a potential for easing the tax burden on our citizens. And the fact that the Breeden Company has offered to pay for the sculpture, and the designer has waived her usual fees, means that no taxpayer money is involved. For me, that is the icing on the cake. It seems to me that this beautiful sculpture is a win-win for the Breeden Company, the city, and the citizens of Portsmouth. I strongly urge you to support this wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And our next speaker is Mr. Coleman Young, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and city officials. I come before you to support 100% this Circle of Sail, but I have to be honest and open and transparent to you, because I do have a hidden agenda. But I have to be honest and open and transparent to you because I do have a hidden agenda. My mother was an artist. She was an art teacher and student attendant of art education for the state of Virginia. And she would be very proud and expect me to come before you with sincere concern about the city. And anyway, as anybody knows, you do not disappoint your mother, so. I come to you because, to me, the simple lines of the sail embodies the mission, the desire, the direction of this city. As has been pointed out before, the sails are part of our seal. And if you look at the sails on a ship, the ship weathers all kinds of storms, but it keeps going. These sails, to me, represent the city of Portsmouth because it is a statement of we're in a direction. We will have problems. We always have problems. We got the tolls. We got a high percentage of tax land. We have, we're landlocked. But we continue. We have a mission, we have a desire, we have a direction. And so I'll cut it short. I'm in support of it. I think it's excellent, the donation of time and effort into the design, the funding of it by a local developer or a regional developer. And I'm in total support of this sculpture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to speak on the matter? Please come to the lectern and you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Peter Youngblood. I live at 535 Hampton Place, and I'm on the planning commission. This is the kind of thing that we in the planning, on the planning commission, really look forward to. We think it's a great draw to our city. And I'd like to point out that we had a sail sculpture in the past. You may not recall, but well, some of you will, that at Middle Street, about where the Sports Hall of Fame is now, there was a 20 or 30-foot sail sculpture, a steel sculpture, that was taken down when the Sports Hall of Fame was built. This sculpture was taken over to the city impound lot, or whatever you call that area, and over time was either forgotten or lost. We tried to resurrect it a couple times, and it had just gotten into really bad repair. But my point is, the idea of a sail representing the city of Portsmouth is not new. We've been doing this for a long time, and Rebecca has just revived an old, very good idea. So I'm fully in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please come to the lectern. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
I won't take five minutes, I promise. Good evening, Mayor, city council, everybody here. I'm Teri Danaher. I live at 413 Dinwiddie Street. And I am here to speak in support of this piece of art here in the circle. That circle has been here for a long time, and except for the flowers that are there now, it has been empty. And there was a bird there once that had a nest that was a very special bird. And that's it. That's all we've had there. And it would be lovely to finally have something. And I don't know how many are familiar with the term, "Never looked a gift horse in the mouth." But we are being presented with an opportunity to have a beautiful sculpture, which is not exactly a monument, it's an artwork. So it doesn't have to represent a person or a specific thing. It's art. And it's, I'm, I was an art commissioner, so I'm partial to art. My house is purple, so I'm obviously into outdoor art. I think that if you just look at what this is about, and I think most of you kind of are there, it's a wonderful expression of our city. It incorporates all sorts of emblems that are used in our city. It goes very well with the signage in our city. And it's right there outside where everybody can see it. So I would love to see this happen, and I ask you all to please vote for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And sir, you have five minutes.
This is Mayor, members of council, Reggie Allen, 1421 Wilcox Avenue in the Brighton section of Portsmouth, and an old Navy man. And the reason I decided to get up and say something, because we have a lot of ships that come by this area going through the waterways. And we got a lot of visitors from that. So, and this would bring more visitors. It's not up in and there, but that would bring more visitors because people won't, when they see something like that, they want to know what's going on. So they'd be stopping to visit our city to see what's going on. So don't cut out the visitors. Let's approve this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Mayor, city council representatives, and our city manager, Maggie McGruder, I live at 111 High Street. In our city, we have art and history. And I think the sails will look very beautiful in the circle. And I understand that at night, it is going to be lit up. I think I was told that. And I think that will really be beautiful when people come in our city at night. But I hope that our city council will remember the history in our city and help with the hammerhead crane. And as a retired shipyard person, when we get ready to take that down, that we will try to find a place that we can put the hammerhead crane somewhere, a replica of the hammerhead crane. And I would be very glad to help with that and if we need to raise money. I do belong to an organization that would, would be willing to help with that in raising money for that. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Thornton, and I live in Brighton, 1306 Marshall Avenue. And I like this idea of putting sails in that little roundabout. That'll look nice. But I was just, I mean, this is just my personal opinion. It might be missing a little bit of color. Maybe we should paint them black. No, not really. But, yeah, it's a great idea, so. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And sir, you have five minutes.
Can I have 20? Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, to each and every one here, the sail's a beautiful thing. Now, look, some of us gonna be getting mad, some don't like it, some do. Some people like cake, some people don't. Some people like chicken, some don't. So I'm not gonna be mad with anybody because they don't like it. I do like it, and I stated before that I liked it. And it's in a nice place because as a sailor got up here, you know, he's a shot of water sailor, but he's all right. So we can let this sail thing be. Some beauty need to come, and let's stop always. Every time something come up, we got to have people to deadbeat it. I don't like this, I don't like that. That's true. But I'm not gonna be mad, I'm gonna still be friends with you. Because I'm gonna come there and I look at the sail. We have the sail come out here in this water every year. All the sailors, city postal support it greatly. Look at all the old ships come here. Some be docked right here by the building. So if you don't like the sail, then don't come down and look at it. Stay at home. And if you do like it, come down and support it. But I said about four years ago, let's go, let's get something, that's gonna be named Old Seagull or Buzzard or something like that. Let's get something decent. Now, we got something decent. As long as it ain't costing me no money. I said, put the sail there. And all the time, we always have people gonna come up here. I don't like this, I don't like that. That's true. Because there's a lot of people I don't like either. But I associate, I don't have to associate with them, but I love you just the same. See, I love you, but I don't like you. I don't have to associate with you. But anyway, the sail's a great thing. This young lady have did a great thing. And I want to see something before I pass on. Because I've been around this city since I come from Korea, the 50. And it's about time, you're back on the track now, doing good things, people talking great things about the city, let's keep it up. So if you don't like the sail, stay at home, don't come down, take no pictures of it. Just stay at home and be happy with it. And everybody be happy. Let's, let's do the right thing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. And sir, you have five minutes.
Scott Horner, Levon Craddock, 24 Allen Crescent. I grew up in the middle of Kansas, and the thing that I see is, growing up in Tornado Alley, is what is Mother Nature gonna do? And that's my biggest question. Has this had any type of wind tunnel testing at all? Because Mother Nature can be very cruel, and if she wants to take it away, that's 22 feet tall of aluminum sheets flying at somebody. And just curious is what it could be, if that has been fully tested or not, to withstand Mother Nature's wrath? That's all.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Dr. Patton, members of council. I was not intended to speak tonight. I was just here to show my support for this piece of art. We just need to be very mindful, on a more serious note, it complements the pavilion. A lot of our citizens are getting on the ferry, going one way, and that is over to Norfolk. We need to have something on this side of the water for the Norfolk citizens to come over and see what we're doing over here in Portsmouth. We do not need to, you know, be smiteful and kind of disrespect a great gift of generosity from the Breeden Company, because this may also open up doors for other companies to also help our school division, other areas of our city that are lacking. So I stand 100% behind this piece of art. We need to move forward. If we continue with the monument piece and black and white, you know, why do we eat all full of white styrofoam paper plates? Why do we drink out of white styrofoam cups? Why do we use white toilet tissue? We gotta be very, it's time to grow up. You know, there's white and black, and going back in the past, the monument is here. People in this room had nothing to do with the monument being built. And, you know, this piece of art will also, you know, give us a look forward because we are a port city. We have the ports, we have, you know, the docks here, we have ships, we don't ban Harborfest, we don't protest Seawall Festival, we are all in support of that. So we should be in support of this because, again, it complements the pavilion. We're looking for naming rights for the pavilion. And if we turn down a gift like this, who's ever gonna look to buy naming rights for the pavilion? Who's ever gonna want to support us and give us money and help develop our waterfront? Again, let's be mindful, talk to the owner of the ferry. The majority of the passengers are taking to Norfolk. He's making money off of our citizens going to Norfolk. Norfolk citizens really don't have a reason to come to Portsmouth by the ferry unless they are going to work or want to come and see a family member. This piece of art, which is a beautiful piece of art, I'm glad it's white because it resembles the pavilion, is near the pavilion, it complements the pavilion, and it also represents the ships that passes through. So therefore, it'll give the citizens an opportunity to come over here and see what we have, to eat in our restaurants, to shop in our stores, and also to visit around our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I had not intended to speak tonight, but hearing everybody in support of this, I did appreciate Peter Youngblood's appreciation of the former sail that Dick Cossett had done on Middle Street. And now, talking about the sail and how it represents the city of Portsmouth, I'm reminded of the old logo of the city of Portsmouth that said, "Where rail meets sail." Well, we got the Railroad Museum right next door. So now, rail will meet sail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker, please. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter?
Good evening. My name is Joe Elder. I live at 417 North Street. As a resident, business owner, downtown business owner, and as president of the Old Town Business Association, I would like to just express my interest and support of this particular sculpture. As a business owner, we know the importance of tourism, and we also understand how much business we get each year from the traveling yachtsmen who are on the intercoastal waterway. Every spring and fall, it's a, basically a yacht highway, and they do come into our city. And I believe this would be a wonderful sculpture to represent our city and our appreciation of their coming into Portsmouth instead of going across the river to Norfolk. So please support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much for your participation. This brings us to seventeen two ninety on our agenda, public hearing on use permit applications. And the first is item A, use permit seventeen dash oh three. I'll ask the clerk to read the caption of the hearing. And then I'll call on the city manager to have her staff and the applicant to give a brief, and then I'll open the public hearing. So, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. UP seventeen oh three, Port Norfolk, Jeffrey Young, managing partner of Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare, is requesting a use permit for a substance abuse treatment program at 2700 London Boulevard. The program will offer both residential and outpatient care. The property is presently zoned general mixed use and was formerly occupied by an adult day support and residential care program that catered to mentally challenged individuals. The property is designated on the comprehensive plan, future land use map, as light industrial, electronic roll call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would like to let you know and the audience here that I will be abstaining from any discussion and the vote. I am one of the owners, Lucas Lodge, our family business, and we have an interest in this property that we're leasing. So I will be abstaining from the discussion and the vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you show in the minutes that Councilwoman Lucas Burke is recusing herself from this matter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, members of council, I call on Mr. Bob Bowling for this item.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of city council. As noted, this is a use permit application on behalf of Jeffrey Young, the managing partner of Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare. And this is for a substance abuse program that will be located at 2700 London Boulevard. I think this is a site most people are familiar with. On the left, you see our zoning map, shows the site as zoned general mixed use, and a couple of photographs of the site on the right-hand side of that slide. The property in question, as you can see, this is a schematic of the site plan, basically shows the outline of the building, shows the parking that is both in the front and to the side of the property. And just point out that there's more than sufficient parking to support the requirements of the building as requested in this application. As noted, the proposal is for a residential care facility for up to 25 persons, the outpatient for up to 40 persons. Very quickly, we just sort of go around the perimeter of the property to give you an idea of what's around it. This is to the rear of the property to the north. This is a light industrial building. It's used for storage primarily. I believe there's some bus storage, in fact, on the backside of that, of that building. Over to the east side, I think we're familiar, we have the Economy Lodge Motel there and post office. Across- Across London Boulevard, we have the London Oaks apartment complex, a large complex across the street. And on the west side, in the very, in the very edge of the property, there's a small cul-de-sac that kind of comes in and touches the property on the very, the very edge of the property. So once again, this is the request. The planning commission considered this application, conducted a public hearing at their meeting of June the, June the 6th. They voted five to zero to recommend approval, subject to eight conditions. Those eight conditions are included in the city manager's cover letter and in the staff report you were provided with the application. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have regarding this application.
Any questions? I'll ask the applicant to come forward, and this is not part of the public hearing, and be available to answer any questions, anything that you want to add to the briefing given by the director of planning.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe, members of city council and city staff. My name is Robert Barclay. My business address is 200 High Street, Suite 500 Portsmouth, Virginia. And I'm the attorney for the applicant tonight. I think the staff covered a lot of the basics. I'll just state in the public hearing, we have some speakers signed up who will address some of the specifics about who Safe Harbor is and the procedures they'll use in the building. The one thing I would like to add is that the applicant has worked with the Portsmouth Police Department to develop a comprehensive security plan for the use of the facility, because in our meetings with neighboring property owners, that was a significant concern. And so the public will be kept safe through this plan. In particular, the plan will include only one entry and exit for all patients coming into the facility. All other points of entry and exit will be alarmed, so that if someone's leaving the building with sounded alarm, they'll be the fire exits. There'll be a security camera system in the building to monitor all ingress and egress. And the applicant will pay for an off-duty police officer to be on-site beginning one hour prior to any outpatient services being delivered to one hour after outpatient services. So that would be a total of five hours of an off-duty police officer who will be on the site in a patrol car at the expense of the applicant. And that officer would be available for calls, any other sort of calls that might occur in the vicinity of the project. And that plan was development, developed working with Sergeant Jenkins with the Portsmouth Police Department. He was very helpful in coming up with the security plan, and we think it'll provide comprehensive security for the facility throughout its time of use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. We're ready for the public hearing. And now, now open the public hearing. And we do have several people who've signed up to speak, and I'll take them first. The first speaker is Jody Pegram. And sir, you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Jody Pegram. I'm one of the principal owners of Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare. Before we get started, there was mentioned there was some lights to let me know what time, how much I was speaking. I'm visually impaired, I'm sight impaired. I can't see these lights, so anybody can just speak up if I go over time.
Madam Clerk.
I don't want to do that. But, but just quickly, I'm a person in long-term recovery, and I'm from the area. You know, my, my mom and dad grew up here in Portsmouth, Parkview, Simon'sville. I used to live right across the street, over a number-one high street. And, and back in the 90s, I was a heroin addict. And I ran the streets of Portsmouth, back when Jeffrey Wilson and Prentice Park and Ida Barber and everything was around. And I was an active heroin addict, and, you know, through family and friends' intervention, I was able to get sent to treatment up in Pennsylvania. And through that, it really, it really affected my life in a truly, sincerely positive way. And, and I've never been back. I've never been back to live in Virginia since. From there, I went down to South Florida to continue my care, living in some sober living. And, and this is what I wanted to do. Like, it affected my life in such a way to where I wanted to, to be in this field, working with, with recovering people and helping people, you know, get off drugs and find and recover for themselves. And, and that's what's happened. I've been super blessed, super fortunate. I, I started down in South Florida. I've pretty much had every position you can have in this industry, as far as operating and running residential and outpatient behavioral health clinics. I have facilities down in Florida, Prescott, Arizona. I still have interest in three facilities out in Prescott, Arizona. I've opened facilities in Scottsdale to Orange County, California. I also have two facilities up in Washington DC right now. One's in Georgetown, one's on Capitol Hill. And I moved back for the first time about a year ago. I got custody of my son. My son's 16 years old, and I was living in DC and not being able to see well. I would, I knew I needed some help with, with my boy, and so I moved down to be near my family. And so, so I'm back, and it's really been a full circle. And I, I have some friends that live here locally, and as I came back in town and started to reunite, unite with some people, I was looking around and, and recognized it was a problem. And I had people coming to me going, "Jody, you know, we could really use something like this around here." And the fact of the matter is, the treatment behavioral health industry is, it's really been for people with private insurance, or the people that had the means to receive treatment. It's, it's not for a lot of people. Medicaid's never provided the funding. A lot of HMO-type of insurance policies have never had a very good benefit for behavioral health. And so that's always been the challenge. Well, what happened over the last year is the state of Virginia has launched something called the ARTS program. And essentially, the state of Virginia has gotten tired of people dying from substance abuse. And so they've really stepped up to the plate. And what they've done is funded Medicaid in a way to where actually people can provide treatment in a good way. So essentially, last year in the state of Virginia, there was 40,000 people that couldn't receive help for substance abuse problems. About 1,000 of them actually got help. So they've, they've added money so people can come in and provide the services. We are wanting to do that in the city of Portsmouth. When we decided we wanted to do this, to me, Portsmouth was the most obvious location for, for some personal reasons, like I just mentioned. And there's a true need here. So, you know, what, what we'd like to do, after looking around the city and trying to find the right property, we found 2700 London Boulevard, the Lucas Lodge.
Sir, you have one minute left.
Thank you. The Lucas Lodge. And I can tell you, of almost 20 years of doing this, I have never seen a building, and I sincerely mean this, that's been better suited for what we're trying to do. Normally, when we go into these properties, we have to do all types of outfitting with sprinklers and commercial kitchens, and, and it's an expense. And, and the truth of the matter is, it's, it's hard to support that, that expense here in the city of Portsmouth, to go find a property that's outfit, that would need to be outfitted properly. 2700 London Boulevard is the place. If you, if, if, if there is a need, which I believe there is, for a facility like this in the city of Portsmouth, that is the location where it needs to be. It is, it is, it is set up perfectly. We've already got the blessings from the states. If we can get their approval through here, we can be up and operating and serving the community. The city of Portsmouth, the people in the city of Portsmouth deserve that.
Your time is up.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Pegram for his information and story that he shared. I did have a question in regards, I just wanted to make sure I understood him correctly.
Yes, sir.
Want to thank you for sharing your story with us. Also, did I understand to say that your program, what differentiates it from some of the other programs, is the fact that you will be allowing for Medicaid patients to, recipients to come to the facility?
Absolutely. That's what it's going to be built around, for the city of Portsmouth, for the people in Portsmouth. So it'll be case-managed, referred. If they're not on Medicaid, we will assist that, so they can get on Medicaid if they qualify. But, you know, a lot of substance abusers in the city of Portsmouth will qualify for that service. So that's really why we're bringing it, for that population.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Jeffrey Young. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeffrey Young. I'm the managing partner at Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare. And so I wanted to take a brief moment to discuss a little bit about who we're going to be treating and how we're going to be treating them. As, as Jody and Dr. Whitaker addressed that, this will primarily be folks who are recipients of Medicaid. This will be made possible through the ARTS program, which Jody also talked about. That stands for the Addiction Recovery Treatment Services. And this is a program that the state of Virginia has put into place to, to, again, make Medicare viable as a form of addiction treatment. With this program, we're able to offer top-quality care that was typically reserved for folks on private insurance or with cash pay ability to receive those kinds of services. So I'm very excited about this. I've worked in the field for about the last six years, providing these services to, to those folks with, with, with the means. And it pained my heart to watch the other, what I call 90% of the folks who desperately needed these services, unable to get them. So that's all changed here in the state of Virginia. And so the folks that we'll be treating will be Portsmouth residents. They'll be referred through the Medicaid system from case managers. And they'll be treated at two primary levels. The first level is a residential level of care. This requires 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week supervision and care, and they will live on-site. That's for the 25 beds. Folks that are appropriate for that level of care will have likely have gone to some sort of detox or hospitalization to become stable. So they're going to be entering into this program with a medical stability, but also some sobriety. These won't be people coming in straight off the streets where we'll be providing medical detox services. They will be stable. They'll stay in that level of care for approximately 30 days, but it's dependent on the medical necessity of the patient, so it could be 15 days, it could be 60 days, depends on their particular needs. From that point, they would be stepped down to a level of care where they would re-enter the community at the outpatient level. They would go back home, or maybe to a halfway house or some sort of supportive living. We won't provide, be providing any halfway house services or anything like that. We'll be sticking just with the state-licensed treatment facilities of residential outpatient care. So after the residential, they'll enter the outpatient level of care. In the beginning, they'll start at a higher level of care, which will be five days a week for three hours a day in the evening. That's going to look like group therapy and life skills development and case management. The goal will be to begin supporting them into the integration of managing working and, you know, living successfully in the community sober. And it takes a lot of support to do that. As they begin to demonstrate their ability to do that on their own, we'll begin to step that level of care down a little bit. At that point, when it's appropriate, they'd enter into three days a week at the outpatient level for three hours a day. And then again, that would continue on as long as needed. It's different for every person. Usually, it's 30 days to 45 days for each particular level. Once the patient demonstrates continued stability and success at that level of care, the final stage of outpatient, before they no longer need services, looks like three services per week for about an hour and a half. Typically, I do two group sessions and one individual therapy session or case management. And this supports them in the final transition to where they're just on their own, going to 12-step meetings or things of the sort. So, so that was a lot of information, real fast. Is there any questions that I can answer regarding kind of the levels of care, or any questions you have at all about the project?
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. The present climate in DC, as far as the cuts that are being recommended for Medicaid, will that impact on this type of program and the funding?
To the, my best of my knowledge, no. What I'm being told, that was obviously a major concern as we watched that happen, that what, as I understand it, the states have been given the ability to manage this particular funding, and they've set this money aside. And it doesn't look like that can be taken back unless the state decided to do it. So, so I do not believe so.
Okay. And there's the second question, as far as any coordination with the police department. I know that in the past, we've addressed addiction through a criminal process, and now I know we are starting to look at it more now as a medical issue. And so are there any coordination with police department in this program?
It'll absolutely, I mean, so, so we have the security plan that we talked about, but I think more what you're talking about is, is where it's, they're picked up.
I'm talking about, right, those who are on drugs and typically get locked up, and there's typically not quite a bit of treatment for them. Would this be a route that?
It'll absolutely be my intention to do that. The only piece that would get in the way is if they're medically stable. So if someone coming into our facility high on drugs, they're probably going to need a detox level, and that's a level of care that's, that's above what we'll be offering. So I may not be able to have folks coming from the point of intervention with the police straight into the facility, but I certainly can work with the police departments as to what detoxes to send them to, and then, or, and start the process, so as soon as they're at detox, they're coming right over to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Barclay. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city staff. I previously provided my personal information for identification purposes earlier. The primary focus of my comments were the security plan. I think I went over that earlier, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about that. But suffice it to say, the Portsmouth Police Department is a very helpful service that the police department offers, is working with businesses to help develop a security plan, should the need for that arise. And they were extremely cooperative in working with us and doing that. And that's how we came up with this plan, because, and I'd just like to point out that the officer that is going to be paid by Safe Harbor to be on-site will also be able to function sort of as a community police officer. That officer will be on-site for five hours, five days a week, in the evening hours from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And they will be available for calls in accordance with police department procedure. So that's going to create a presence, a police presence in that area for an extended period every weeknight. So I think that will enhance security for that area. In addition to that, just referring to Dr. Whitaker's question about Medicaid funding, it's my understanding that Virginia, some years ago, was granted a waiver by the federal government in giving some discretion over how Medicaid dollars could be spent. And this program, this ARTS program he's referred to, comes from that waiver process. And I think what's very important about it, it had bipartisan buy-in. It was something that came through not just the governor, but the General Assembly. That means the leadership of both parties had to sign off on it. So I think there's a real commitment to continue to fund this program, regardless of what happens with Medicaid. Thank you. And if, if, is there any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yes. Councilwoman Simmons, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barclay, there were eight conditions inserted from the planning commission. Is everybody on board with those eight conditions?
Yes.
To do with parking and fencing and that type of thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Everybody's good.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor, Chair, you have the floor.
Mr. Barclay, you spoke about the security plan and, and all the features that, of it. Would it be a problem with you and your applicant if we made that security plan a ninth condition of this application?
No, no. We'd be happy to have the security plan as I outlined it included as a condition.
Yeah, and I said, because at the planning commission meeting, you remember, there were some residents who were particularly concerned about the security. And as you know, we, you and I serve on planning commission together. Sometimes people intend to do things and, whereas it was getting along the process, it doesn't happen. So if we make this a ninth condition, then it would be, we could assure the residents of Mount Herman and Parkview that the security plan would be there. And as you said, that officer would be there, not just for, not just for the building, but with some other things that happen in that neighborhood, and be available for the police department to call on if they need to.
Certainly. That would be, that'd be perfectly acceptable to add that as a condition.
So if I, so if I made the most of approval and add that a ninth condition, there wouldn't be any objections at all?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Norvell Williams. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Norville Williams. I reside at 3004 Carlisle Court, Suffolk, Virginia. I am a coach, certified coach, with American Association of Christian Counselors, also with the John Maxwell team. We provide value-based coaching. And we have been associated with clients in the Portmouths area for the most part of the 2017 year. We support the project, associated with behavioral healthcare through Safe Harbor. Part of one of the things that we want to value, to create value with them, is to use the roundtable concepts that were alluded to by one of the owners in association with sharing what values that the participants have. Values determine what you do. Shaping a different set of values is a part of also what we would support them in doing. So, the culture in the community changes based on the fact that the values change. And so, what they're, what we're attempting to do with Safe Harbor is not only treat that mental condition associated with substance abuse, but there's a psychological, and there's a, just a, just a understanding of what we value to interact with each other. And so, we support it for that purpose because we want to see the community change. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Andrews, and sir, you have five minutes.
I was nervous when I got here, but I feel like I'm at home now, because I recognize everybody. I'm Robert Andrews with Andrews Roofing, 757 Mount Vernon Avenue, Portsmouth. We also own six buildings on Mount Vernon Avenue. I just want to just, you know, demonstrate our interest in the Port Norfolk neighborhood and in the city of Portsmouth. Both of my grandmothers are still alive in this city, living in the city. And I'm involved in some ministry efforts in the city and out of the city, with especially men who struggle with homelessness. They've come out of homelessness, they've come out of addiction, they've come out of even stuff as simple as, not as simple, but sometimes as devastating as divorce. So, we have homes, et cetera, that we go in and we help these men. Addiction is the hardest thing to deal with. I'm sure that you all know that, and probably everybody in this room has been affected by it, at least indirectly. I strongly support Safe Harbor in our neighborhood and in our city. I have, right now, three personal friends who need treatment. None of them have the wherewithal to get treatment, for one reason or another. I envision being able to actually hold their hand and walk them in. I don't know where else they would go to get it. I know Jody Pegram very well. I was around when Jody struggled with his addiction, and I saw him fall apart. And I saw him have to leave town in '99 to get fixed, so to speak. He didn't come back for years. Now, he's back, and he's rebuilt his life, and he's making a difference. So, I can attest to the difference that this kind of facility can make in the lives of people. You know, people are dying, and husbands are losing their wives, wives are losing their husbands, children are losing their parents. I want to be a decent human being and make a difference, especially in this city. I don't think I have to talk too long about the effects. It must be the biggest, worst epidemic that we're dealing with today. It must be, at least indirectly. Maybe I'm a dreamer, but I even envision us all being able to refer people there. I think it's a community effort. Everybody in this room, from the council down to anybody who lives in the city. It's good for business in our city. It'll employ a physician, a doctor, nurses, et cetera. It's a vacant building that won't be vacant anymore. I'm very happy to have them in the neighborhood. So, I appreciate your time. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Pastor Shoemaker. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Pastor Connie Shoemaker.
If you would move to the mic, please, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pastor Connie Shoemaker. I'm the pastor of Port Norfolk Church. I'm a homeowner for 30 years in Portsmouth, and I have rental property as well. I have been in the Port Norfolk area a long time, and I have seen a lot of things. As a person who deals with needy people every day, alcoholism, substance abuse, mental illness, and homelessness are major issues that I deal with every single day. For the past 17 years, I have engaged with 886,421 families in Portsmouth. And I have seen the need to have this type of facility. I'm very much in support of the Safe Harbor facility. And it's a very needed place here in Port Norfolk, not just Port Norfolk, Mount Herman, our city of Portsmouth. Every day, I try to find help for those that have nowhere to go. They have no financial means to get help. I can, I'm only, I'm only limited. I call everybody in the city, and we try to find help, and it's difficult. There is nowhere to send people like that, especially now since the city, it's not that the city, but the government has opened up a way to have people treated. It's one of the biggest breakthroughs, I think, for the state of Virginia. And I was doing some statistics in Hampton Roads area, and 10,000 homeless people are in our area. And out of that many people, 77% have addiction issues. And so, we can see that if we don't fight addiction, we're never going to be able to fight homelessness. In 2015, overdose deaths were equal to the amount of crashes in the Hampton Roads area. In 2016, heroin overdoses surpassed gun-related homicides in our area. And I think that as a person of the Port Norfolk area, I'm only within two miles of this facility, I could fill that facility tomorrow with just the people that I personally know from our neighborhood. And I can feed them, and I can clothe them, and I can love them, but I can't heal them. I do not have the means. Most addicts are difficult in the trust area. And I've spent 20 years of my life trying to get folks to trust me and allow me the opportunity to help them. I just want to testify about one person, and I won't say his name, but he was homeless, and he was an addict. He lived in the back of my cube truck on the church property. I didn't know it because he put a black sheet up, and I'd put stuff in the cube truck. I do a lot of food, 20,000 pounds of food every two weeks for Portsmouth. And he was an addict. And I took him in, and we loved on him, we got him a job, and we helped him with his addiction. We counseled him every week, three times a week. I counseled with him. That young man today is working at the shipyard. That young man today has a home. And that young man today had bought his first vehicle this past week. And I think we need to give a chance in our communities. I'm not afraid. If I lived right beside it, I would not be afraid. I think it's a positive thing in the city of Portsmouth that we need to do. The opioid epidemic today is a crisis in this world, not just Virginia. It's all over the United States. And if we don't start making a move and having a change of heart for those people that struggle with addictions, and offer them hope, not just a handout, but a hand up, to be good citizens. I think that we, as citizens of Portsmouth, need to offer that help to them. And I will do whatever I can personally to ensure that that thing happens and that I can be a part of it in any way. I was a drug addict, I was a drug dealer. I dealt drugs in the back of the parking lot of the very church that I minister at now. And God touched me, and He healed me. And because He done that, I chose to serve my whole life helping other people who were just like me, a broken mess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Reverend Ward. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Protocol having been established, I am Reverend DeLaristine Ward, and I live 2613 Markham Street in the city of Portsmouth in the Northam Park, Mount Herman community. And I'm here today because during the campaign, I came to those forums, and I heard one word, transparency. It was important for the citizens of Portsmouth to know that this council would be transparent. However, I was saddened to know that this council had approved for a drug treatment rehab center to be placed in our community without the communities knowing. And it's also placed in an area where drugs are very prevalent. We had so, so much for the transparency, for it is clear as mud for the community in this issue. Last week, we had four gentlemen to come to our civic league meeting. And the first gentleman said that we should be, they, we should be excited because of what they're doing. And my response was, well, why not in your neighborhood? So, I asked you that, too. Why not in your neighborhood? The second gentleman, the attorney, he got up and he embellished, when he allegedly implied that the building in question has recently been vacated, when in actuality, the building has been vacated for maybe a year or more. The police officer got up, and he said that it would be off-duty police officer assigned to that facility, and he would respond to any alarm that would go off in the neighborhood. I find that difficult for an off-duty police officer to even want to respond to an incident in a neighborhood. The last man that got up, he apologized. And he said it was miscommunication, which is why we did not know about this plan, this proposal. And so, in my assessment of the miscommunication, in the miscommunication, this council misrepresented and disregarded the citizens and the civic league and the Northam Park, Mount Herman community, and I am truly appalled at that. So, my reason for being here is, if it's such a great thing, why were we not included? Why were we not asked about it until the afterfat came, when they didn't know anything, and they said it was a miscommunication? So, I no longer have confidence in this council, because this council did not let us know what was going on, and they already told us it's a done deal. So, I really don't appreciate it, and I do know drugs is very prevalent, and in that area particularly, it is going to always be prevalent. And there's a kindergarten preschool down the street from this facility. That's all I have to say. I do thank you for your time, and peace be with you.
The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Just want to sit and imagine if, if, if you could have Mr. Baldwin, someone speak to notifications of the neighborhood. I do know that the planning commission meeting, that there were persons from the neighborhoods there, Port Norfolk and Mount Herman. And I myself spoke to the, I spoke to the applicants and asked them if they would reach out further to Mount Herman, which is partly why they were at your meeting after that. So, if someone could just speak to that for the minister.
Yes. Members of council, Mr. Cherry, I mean, Mr. Baldwin will be happy to speak to that.
You can sit down, and, Mr. Baldwin.
Answer the question. If you look within your agenda packet, you will actually see the mailing list of people we mailed notifications to. Of course, we comply with all the statehood requirements for our notifying adjacent property owners. We also notified both the Mount Herman and the Port Norfolk Civic Leagues. And the application was also advertised in the currents, both before, you know, obviously, this was, has also been to the planning commission a month ago, and it was advertised for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this public hearing? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Chapel. I live at 601 Dorset Avenue here in Portsmouth. On December 26th, 1996, at 3:30 in the afternoon, I gave birth to an eight-pound, nine-ounce baby girl named Claire Ashley. And on October 23rd, 2013, I lost my 16-year-old daughter to a heroin overdose. These are my daughter's best friends here with me this evening, and this is what I have of my daughter. I am here to support Safe Harbor, and I'm asking you all this evening, I'm asking you all to be bold, I'm asking you all to make a difference, I'm asking you all to stand up for all of those who are struggling and suffering and lost in addiction. I'm asking you to think that even if you save one person, maybe they won't have to just hold a bag of ashes. There is so much good that can come from this. There is so much hope that can be had. I want my daughter here to be growing up with her friends, to becoming a young adult, to be turning 21, to be out there living her life. But she's not. And it's all because of something so, so ridiculous. Please support Safe Harbor and their efforts. Please just remember, please remember my daughter, Claire Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Is there anybody else would like to speak at this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is now closed. And before us is the question, in order for it to be on the table for us to discuss, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mayor.
Excuse me. Vice Mayor Cherry.
I'd like to offer amendment to that motion to include the ninth condition, which would be the security plan that Mr. Attorney Barkley spoke about, that would include the access points, the fire alarm, the security system, and the off-duty officer to be in.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. The motion that's on the floor, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. We will vote on the amendment to the motion. Any discussion of the amendment? Everybody knows the nature of the amendment? Call for the question. All in favor, the motion to amend, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 60 with one abstention. Okay, we'll now have the consideration of the amended motion, which includes the original conditions recommended by the planning commission, plus the one that we just added to the motion with...
Thank you, ma'am.
I know it was.
It is.
Wish it was some pain.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. We passed the building, but for sale or for lease for a year, you know, because the state changed how we were able to use the facility. They don't want to license it because, uh, group homes like we do use for large facilities like that because they consider it a institution. So we had to move all of our individuals out to smaller homes because they didn't want to live in more individualized homes like we do, to kind of integrate them into the community, living in a home like we do, shopping facilities like we do, going to events like we do. So we had no purpose for that larger facilities, and we were trying to sell or lease. And so we got a lease and a sale at the same time, but they came first with the lease, and it was just so wonderful that, you know, they came up with this. You know, which is different than what we provide several systems of those with this developmental facilities, but this is with the O B and awareness.
It's a, 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 it's
On the opposite side of the interstate and commercial and industrial property, there might be alternative places to explore for anyone looking at putting up cell towers. So again, we didn't do any assessment whether or not they're available. There was no real estate. And I just wanted to point out, we believe there are alternative sites that could be explored. This item went before the Planning Commission at their June 6th meeting. They didn't have a public hearing and the Planning Commission by a vote of five to zero recommended denial. I would point out, there's some staff concerns that are noted in the city manager's letter with this item that were also part of our staff report. And I just want to point out of those concerns, the first three, which staff felt were the really some of the more critical ones. The first one, you know, staff's position that the proposed use is just incompatible with the adjacent single-family residential uses. And again, we're talking about justification for the staff coming up with this recommendation denial, which also was, I think, part of the Planning Commission's consideration. Number one, we considered the cell tower and at that location, close proximity to the residential use there to be incompatible with the residential uses. We also believe there's no reasonable manner in which to create a transition or a buffer. Cell tower's so tall, there's just simply no way to screen the structure of that magnitude in such close proximity to residential uses. So we don't believe that that's possible for a transition. And then finally, we just believe in looking at the policies that are contained in the city's conference of plan, that this type of development would be inconsistent with the overall goals and policies of the conference of plan. And with that, as I mentioned, Planning Commission recommended denial and be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding the application.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative of the applicant here tonight? Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the briefing?
I'm just here-
If you would move to- I'm not asking you to speak for the issue. I want to make sure that we have a chance to make sure that we totally understand your application.
Yes. Well, my name is Claire Forehand. I live at 219 Sir Oliver Road, and I'm here to represent T-Mobile. I am here to again request the case to be deferred until August 8th due to a high demand of projects at the end of the second quarter, and we would like more time to do diligence to this case.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We're ready to start the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open, and we do have some people who have signed up to speak. The first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright, and sir, you have five minutes.
Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in the Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth. Good evening. To all those assembled, I'm representing the Civic League tonight from Cavalier Manor, and if it's okay, we'll just wait until this matter comes up again because we were not in favor of it. And it was some things that we told them at the planning session that we felt like we were neglected by not being informed. We already had one tower up there, as you could probably see, and they had, I believe, five or six alternative sites where they could have used. And even the people on Rapidan Street, the address of the project was Victory Boulevard, but if you could see, it was closer to Rapidan Street than it was Victory Boulevard. And the people on Rapidan Street didn't even know anything about it. So I'd rather wait until this comes back and before I make my remarks if it's okay.
Yes, sir. It is okay, and we welcome you back at the continuance.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter tonight? Anybody else? I now declare that we'll continue the public hearing to our regular meeting scheduled for August the 8th, 2017. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to defer our consideration of this matter to the same meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and duly seconded, that we defer this matter to our August 8th council meeting. That's August 8th, 2017. Any discussion? Dr. Whitaker.
The issue that Mr. Wright raised as far as notification, can we hear from Mr. Baldwin again as far as notification that was given to the residents?
Yes, sir. Dr. Patton.
Thank you again. And just like the last application, we have a standard notification process we do, which we notify on according to the state code requirements, all adjacent property owners, they were notified, as was the Civic League. So that is the standard. We also advertise in the newspaper, and there was a sign posted as well on Rapidan Street.
Okay. So the fact that the address that was used was Victory Boulevard, that didn't preclude the residents on Rapidan from being notified?
No, I think it may cause confusion, people, they may not think it applies to them. But our adjacent property notification goes along the edges of the property, so we were looking at, it doesn't get very far, you know, down the street when we look at those things. We're looking at directly across the street, basically, from the application site. So people, I'll be sure there were people up and down Rapidan that did not get direct letters, although, you know, people directly across the street would have. And that's the state code requirement.
So you said the people on Rapidan-
I'm sure there are people on Rapidan. In fact, you know, the entire street does not get a mailed notification. Our requirement is adjacent properties.
Okay.
So if you're directly across the street, you would get one. If you're not, we tend to go a little bit further around. We try to do a little bit wider notification than required. But on a street like Rapidan, as long as it is, there's certainly going to be people that are outside of our notification requirement.
Yeah. I would think in the future, something that is that intrusive on the neighborhood that -- because Rapidan, it is a long street, but along that area where Rapidan is, there are not that many homes that would have required massive mailing, so.
We could certainly do that. We have no problem with expanding the notification zone.
Since it's going to be moved to August the 8th, would they be able to receive notification by that time?
Again, if council would like us to send letters back out advising residents of the defer, we're not required to, but we'd be glad to do that.
Council, Dr. Whitaker, would you like to amend the motion to include that?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is to defer with instructions to the city manager to have a broader footprint of re-notification.
We will consider and get that back to you.
Well, let's get a second to the-
Second.
Okay. So let's vote on the amendment first, which is to broaden the footprint of the notification and to re-notify. Everybody understand the amendment? All in favor of the amendment to the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Motion carries. And now we'll consider the motion as amended. Any discussion on that? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion as amended? Vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. The public hearing is continued to August 8th, and our consideration of this matter is deferred to August 8th. Thank you very much. Public hearing is, of course, closed. This brings us to City Manager's Report in Item 17291, which is the acceptance of some grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $43,758.30 of home investment partnership program income and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
In order to get this before us, is there a motion to approve?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Item 17292, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance to amend the city code, certain section of the code. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Chapter 9.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adopting a new article to establish in an art and cultural district.
In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Call for the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17293, which is a consideration of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting grant funding in the amount of $165,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In order to get this before us, do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say that I did get a message from Judge Johnny Marsh, and he wanted to let you and the manager know that he was planning to be here, but he's on a jury trial. But the Drug Court is where represented tonight, the Drug Court Director, Mr. Logan, and the case manager, my lovely wife, Yvette Walker Cherry, is also here. And lastly, I will be abstaining from this vote, as I just said, my lovely wife is an employee of the Drug Court.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you note that in the minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have the motion to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion on the matter? If you're ready for the question, all in favor of the question, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries six, four, and one abstention.
Six, one.
Six, four, the adoption of the motion. Apologize for my elocution. What was that good barbecue we had? Six people voted four, and one abstained. Which brings us to Item 17295, which is the consideration of another ordinance accepting another grant. Okay. This is the consideration of adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant from the State Department of Social Services. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an employment for TANF participants' grant in the amount of $122,269 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to fund employment readiness programs.
Again, in order to put this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt and duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 17295, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance adopting appropriate and certain grant funds from the Port of Virginia. Would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $109,650 from the Port of Virginia Aid to Local Ports Program and appropriating said amounts in the municipal facilities category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund for the Portside Project.
And before the chair entertains a motion, we do have one registered speaker, and that is Mr. Mark Godalgie-Yatrowski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. Back in May, I wrote to council and opened that letter to the citizenry, and about a week later, I wrote to the Port of Virginia on this matter. I believe that it is a mistake for the port to have granted any funds to the city for this particular structure, for the construction of a structure to be known as Portside. The language in the policy for the aid to local ports indicates that the aid is to be for actual port-style operations. There is a flow of goods. That's not what's going on here. This is an entertainment venue. And so I believe that the board that authorized this grant erred by not reading its policy. Or it could be that the policy is just a smokescreen for the port to hand out hush money to localities that surround it to compensate for what those localities have given up. Most of them, like Portsmouth, Norfolk, Newport News, have given up taxable land to an entity that is supposed to be making us all better off. But in reality, the host cities, the host localities, are helping to serve the port, helping to fill the coffers of the Commonwealth at the expense of our citizens. It is not a balanced situation in terms of revenues offsetting our expenses. But be that as it may, I would ask you not to accept this grant and that you not allocate an additional $600,000 of our tax money to build this metal structure on a site that is already serving the purpose that you envisioned. You have made do for several years with temporary structures, and a whole rainbow of activities have occurred on that site without tying it up with a permanent, quote-unquote, "permanent" structure. You have restroom facilities adjacent to the site. You have the visitor center restrooms, and you have access to the hotel restrooms. So that doesn't necessitate this structure. And the ability to have food trucks on-site to serve as support for the events that are taking place there has changed the landscape considerably from when the old Portside was in operation. Now, the city has never made any money from the old Portside. I know there are people who say it brought many visitors to Portsmouth, but nobody ever substantiates that with any figures. Numbers of people who came there who wouldn't have been here otherwise, numbers of dollars that have flowed into the city treasury, nor has there been any quantification of numbers of businesses that have benefited because Portside was in operation, because there is no benefit. This is not a walking city. I walk. A few people do walk. But people do not walk themselves from Portside to High Street and then patronize other businesses. So it's built on a lot of misrepresentations, a lot of optimistic projections, and in the end, it is a misallocation of scarce funds. So I ask you, do not accept this grant and do not build that structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, is your question directed to the speaker?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Godalgie-Yatrowski, I disagree with you. I'm thankful that the port tendered this grant a couple of years ago. They also tendered a grant for fishing pier that's in operation. I understand you took the unusual measure of trying to speak before their board to persuade them not to give us the grant. Very disappointing to hear that. Certainly entitled to attempt to do that. I'm glad the port board exercised good judgment and didn't allow you to speak to that issue. Portside, this council unanimously, back at our retreat, said that we wanted to rebuild Portside. Many citizens in Portsmouth and surrounding cities enjoyed it. They enjoyed a gathering place, a place to meet people, a place to congregate during the summer months, just like children are now enjoying the fishing pier. As I recall, you also didn't support Entellos. You didn't support the Renaissance Hotel. I think what you really enjoyed was the rotting wharfs and bulkheads that consisted of the waterfront back in the '60s. Of course, you weren't here in the '60s. I think you were in Norfolk or wherever. But we're going to build Portside. People are going to enjoy it. And if the port has additional monies and grants to offer Portsmouth, I would hope that the council at such time would exercise good judgment and accept their money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, is your comment for the speaker?
No, not necessarily.
Well, let's get a motion then on the floor to-
Excuse me, sir. May I respond to-
You've had your time. Thank you, sir. Now, we have a motion that's been made and duly seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Discussion on the question before us, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm going to be voting against this ordinance because of the fact that it requires four taxpayer dollars to be used to help build Portside and in the environment of the budget season where we did not fund education. I think that this represents a misallocation of taxpayer dollars, so I'm going to be voting against it.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton, you've asked to speak.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I would like for you to know that every letter of the application and the requests for applications from the Port of Virginia, for us to submit this proposal for Portside, was followed, and as a result, the Port of Virginia awarded us the grant. In addition, the Portside project was approved by council in the FY 2018 CIP budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, six, one. The motion carries. Which brings us to Item 17296, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $381,207 from the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund administered by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and appropriating said amount in the stormwater category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund for water quality projects.
In order to put this before us for our consideration and discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir, second. Okay. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which comes to Item 17297, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a certain deed. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, of resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia encumbering property owned by the City of Portsmouth and Heavening Street address of 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a pole line.
Again, in order for us to put this matter before us, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made to adopt the resolution and has been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to Item 17298, the consideration of a resolution pertaining to the Circle of Sail. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving the concept plan for the placement of the proposed Circle of Sail sculpture in the Crosswood Street roundabout.
In order to put this matter before us, is there a motion-
So moved.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to New Business, 17299. Boards and Commissions, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we have a nomination tonight.
Okay. 17300, items submitted by council members. Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. With the lateness of the hour, my comments will be brief and only about free events for the next couple of days. We all know that we have Thursday nights at Portside, free music every Thursday evening. Coming up is the Elements Band, then Island Boy, and then the Good Life Band. We also have a free concert at the Pavilion on July 22nd, which is some great jazz musicians, Brian Simpson, Raw Jazz, Connie Parker, who's a legendary in this region, and Sam Rucker. And they will all be performing together at 6:30 PM at the Pavilion, and that is a free concert. There's one other free event of interest for children ages eight to 14 years old at the Sheriff's Training Academy at 1725 Green Street. There is a Get Fit for Kids event every Saturday from 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM for children ages eight to 14. So I'll stop with that and see portsvaevents.com for more information.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out personal privileges that could accompany my wife tonight, as my niece and nephew, Peyton and Preston, Cherry, visited from Atlanta, Georgia. They came out tonight to see how we do business in Virginia.
Thank you, and welcome to the City of Portsmouth. Please stand. 17301, report on pending items. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. During our last meeting, you asked that I reach out to the U.S. Corps of Engineers regarding addressing the mosquito infestation. With that said, we hosted a meeting with Colonel Jason Kelly and representatives from the Corps on last Thursday. Colonel Kelly assured us, when we called to his attention, the efforts of which we have been duly working to address a particular cell three that has cracks in it, and we felt as our team that that was contributing to broadening the mosquito issues that we were having, particularly in Churchland. With that said, it had not been called directly to Colonel Kelly's attention. He assured us, as a result of that meeting, he would address every issue that we called to his attention. Both our team of Mr. Wojak and Mr. Kaler have heard from the Corps since that meeting. In addition, Colonel Kelly has asked that he comes before the council at our next public work session that will be held on July 24th, because he would like to direct, to address the council directly, not only regarding this issue, but to call your attention to other partnering opportunities that he would like to have with the city and the Corps of Engineers.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Which brings us, thank you for that report, and we'll put Colonel Kelly on the next agenda work session. This brings us to non-agenda speakers, item seventeen three oh two, and our first speaker is, excuse the pronunciation, Duraid Anis. Yes, sir, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, honorable Mayor, City Council, the city officials. My name is Duraid Alnayf. Actually, I live in Chesapeake, thirty-eight oh nine Mil Grove Court in Chesapeake and Western Branch. I'm the managing director of ARS Enterprises. We own a lot of businesses, and we love Portsmouth, and we have been working in Portsmouth for almost eighteen years. We have a lot of businesses in real estate. And I'm here because I have a serious concern with a safety issue that I'd like to bring to the attention of City Council, because I've exhausted all other avenues. Basically, we own a building on Trucker Street, fifty-eight, fifty-seven Trucker Street, which we lease to, it's a professional building, we lease to orthodontists, Dr. Morrison Taylor, they have been there for several years. All of a sudden, an ice machine appeared there, an ice house, I believe, and I got complaints from my tenants that, basically, they were infringing on their parking lot. They, I had no idea it existed, so I went to investigate. I saw an ice house, a huge vending machine, adjacent to my parking lot, and people were using the parking lot for the ice machine, and there was trash everywhere in all this. I went to the city government, I spoke with Mr. Baldwin, actually, and the zoning people. They assured me that everything was okay, that they met the zoning requirements, and a building permit was issued, but they were not even aware the building existed. Not a single inspection was done. The machine was working, the business was up and running, and they were trying to make me believe it wasn't there, until they went and found out that actually, no inspections were done, the machine was working. Why was it put next to my parking lot? I don't know how a machine was, a business, a vending business was approved without parking. The machine sits adjacent to Trucker Street, that is clearly marked, no parking on both sides, both directions. Trucker Street and Tyranic Road are very busy streets. That's where CVS Pharmacy is, this where Aldi Store, Walgreens, Hardee's, several gas stations, several businesses, and professional buildings. There is no access whatsoever to that ice machine, except for my parking lot, and we didn't know what to do. We can't block it, patients can't come in, can't go up, staff can't come in, can't go up. Mr. Baldwin brought to my attention that there was an ordinance that allowed that to happen. I'm not an ordinance person, but I looked up the ordinance, and I read it. He told me that it was, I believe, ordinance two thousand and ten, let me look it up, two thousand and ten, City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance was adopted in February nine, two thousand and ten, and I read it, and he said that's why, that's how the vending machine was approved. I looked that up, and Article, the ordinance defines vending machine as a coin-operated machine that sells and dispenses merchandise, which is what this business is. But Article forty-point-one dash nine, Appendix A, City of Portsmouth, a bunch of numbers behind that, allows vending machines in that location, in that particular neighborhood, provided they are not visible from the street. Now, this vending machine was put in that place, adjacent to my parking lot, rather than on the parking lot which was proposed in the permit. That parking lot is, cannot be further from that machine, but was put in there only for visibility, so it would face CVS Pharmacy and the businesses. It cannot be more visible than to be put there, but yet the ordinance says it should not be visible. So I don't know how it was approved. The other thing is the safety of people. The people are parking on the street, the only access to it's on the street that's marked, no parking, on both sides. If somebody parks and finds the machine, uses that machine, opens the door, they can get hit by a car coming on the side. Or if a car veers to the left, they can hit head-on with another car coming from the other side. It's not safe to have that machine. It could have been put in the parking lot of the building where it was proposed, but there was misrepresentation. The city government seems like they did not care. In fact, Mr. Baldwin refused to see me when I went to see him, I had to go to the city manager's office, only when I was accompanied by a representative of the city manager, he agreed to see me, only to refer me to a zoning ordinance.
Sir, your time is up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Dr. Patton, you'll look into this matter. Okay. Next speaker is Joanne Clark, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. I'm Joanne Clark, and I live in the church in part of the city. A neighbor of mine brought to my attention at one of our Civic League meetings and issues that she was having. This is not, I'm not here under Civic League business, but this is how I met her. And the issue is food trucks. She, well, these are her words, but I'll try to paraphrase, because I attended the retreat, and I see that this new council is doing everything they can to put a positive spin on what we're doing in the city, and I congratulate you all. And also, the mosquitoes are not as bad as they used to be, so thank you very much for that, city manager, good job. This is a perception problem that she is having with the food trucks, the fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per event. Basically, she says, and I'm paraphrasing, it says, the ordinance says that we don't want you, that Portsmouth does not want our business. And then she goes on to say, she coincidentally lives in River Cove, which is behind where I live, in Churchland, and she actually has a vendor license in Chesapeake because she says they're more friendlier with their ordinance. Now, I don't want you to think that Chesapeake necessarily is doing things better, because I lived there when they were doing the same thing, they were wrestling with what to do with food trucks. And over the years, they amended the ordinance and, you know, gave it a pat on the head and a squeeze on the back, and eventually, they got it to the point where it was palpable for most citizens and the vendors. So it's my hope that maybe you can go back to the ordinance when you get the chance, and maybe make it a little more friendly, user-friendly, to those who are interested in bringing business to Portsmouth. We're excited about the breweries coming and the fact that there are food trucks there. This gal just, you know, was very concerned, she's only been in the city about eight years, so this is relatively new to her and what the process is, but I know that we can go further, and we can do some good things, and I look forward to hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the Chair recognizes our city manager, Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you directed me to move forward and to look into the matter as it relates to food trucks. With that said, my planning director, myself, we had a legal representative, met with the Commission of the Revenue, and when we speak of the cost for a one-day permit to vend as a food truck, those are not fees that are set on outside by municipal government, it is the Commission of the Revenue, and I've asked Mr. Baldwin earlier today to please follow up before the end of the week with our commissioner, because he indicated he would be getting back with us. But we presented to him all aspects and comments on this matter.
Good, and we look forward to getting that report. This concludes our business tonight, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.